So we'll start. And hopefully by the time we get through the preliminaries, we will have a forum. Is that Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, you're on and you had a basis for not being here and going by phone, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I know, family circumstances, I'm tending to my son.
Okay, I got it more. I didn't know how to diplomatically say that. Okay, let me read the record. This is zoning case twenty-four zero-two. The zoning request is under section thirty-seven dash one-four-one-four-two C and section one-four-one-four-point-three. But he couldn't have made this much smaller. It's it's a conditional use for residential plan development to allow thirty single-family attached townhomes with a designation of certain unions as workforce housing and in reliance on the following plan development variations. First variation requires an east yard of thirty feet in order to eh yeah, allow an east front yard of nine feet solely for the purpose of allowing vehicle parking. And provided that the building remained not less than thirty feet from the east lot line of Myers Road. The second one requires a west front yard of thirty feet in order to allow a west front yard of one foot solely for the purpose of allowing vehicle parking. And providing that the building remain not less than thirty feet from the west lot line of School Street. The third one requires a north interior side yard of twenty feet in order to allow a north interior yard of seventeen feet. Fourth one requires a south interior side yard of twenty feet to allow a south interior side yard of six feet solely for the purpose of allowing a driveway and underground detention system and provided that the building remain not less than twenty feet from the south lot line. The fifth one is a west year, west rear yard of twenty-five feet in order to allow a west rear yard of zero feet solely for the purpose of allowing parking and underground detention system and buildings. The building shall not remain shall remain not less than eighteen feet from the east-west lot line and thirty feet east of School Street. The sixth one is limit the use of yards and permits the use of twenty percent of their regulatory yards to be used for limited purposes in order to allow the use of regulatory yards that set forth in items one through five of this legal notice. The seventh one is to impose a maximum floor ratio of point two-five in air in order to allow a floor ratio of one-point-two. Such ratio based upon the area parcel described above. The next eight is which requires open space of thirty percent in a residential plan development in order to allow twenty-eight-point-five percent open space or such other percentages determined following staff parallel agency review. The ninth, provide for a minimum landscaping required for yards including transition yards in order to allow the development according to the landscape plan. The tenth, such other planned development variations as may be identified or developed during the hearing. Okay. What are the comments? Building Department has no objections. Do-Dot says see attached documentation. Health Department, our office has no jurisdiction in this matter. Stormwater has no objection with this concept of the petition, but additional information may be required at the time of permit application. Public Works has no objection with the concept of the petition. Additional information may be required at the time of permit application. And they state, we are the water provider for this proposed project. Externally, Village of Lombard has a attached documentation. Village Park, City of Oakbrook Terrace, City of Oakbrook, York Township and the York Township Highway Department have no objections or no comments received, so I'm uh York Center Fire District, not, I guess, N A. School District forty-five, no comments. School District eighty-eight, no comment. The Forest Reserve says that the Forest Reserve District of DuPage County staff has reviewed the information provided in this notice and due to the sizable distance from the subject property and the district property, they have no specific comment. The property is located thirteen-twelve South Myers Road in Lombard. It is approximately give us the size. Those are oh, point one-nine acres. It's on sewer and water. It was published in the Daily Herald on February seventh. And the public hearing is tonight. Having said that, Mr. Daniels, do you plan on calling any witnesses?
Uh, we do. Uh, we have witnesses in the Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the Z B A. My name's Mark Daniel. Uh, we do have witnesses in the order presented to you in the binder, which will eventually mark as exhibit twenty.
All right, why don't we have them rise and be sworn in at this time?
Put your hands right hands, please. Either soundly, sworn or informed, the testimony about to give at this class now, hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I'll be good.
Why don't we start with the exhibits? You had a site plan and a survey.
We have a site plan and a survey. Uh, to keep the board working down, there are marches exhibits one and two. The survey is exhibit one. The site plan is exhibit two.
Okay. Hey, you want to go do the other exhibits as we go?
Yes, if we can do that and rotate the ones as we are not going to use them anymore by Mr. Haas.
And I'll make a comment. Board member Anderson just came in and we had the quorum by Mr. Kartal by the phone. We now have five of the seven members here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to start with the members of the applicant first and we'll move into the uh presentation. If you guys can make way to the podium, I'll give you the microphone. Uh, very briefly, we are going to give you some information about workforce housing. We have reviewed uh prior related project uh transcripts. I understand uh that the Z B A uh during a prior hearing had stated that it's not in the business of making policy for the county. What we would like to do is establish a record. And ultimately, you're going to hear me talk about how policy can be established on a project-by-project basis. So we have a few witnesses that we'll be addressing uh workforce housing. It shouldn't take too long. Uh, the materials for the presentation are also in exhibit number twenty of the binder uh that we'll eventually uh discuss. Uh, neighbors, I do want to uh thank you for your interest in this. Um, I think all of you, many of you already have my email address from a prior project in the Village of Lombard. Uh, you are certainly welcome to reach out to me at Mark, M A R K at the Daniel Law Office dot com. If there's anything that you feel that you need from the the hearing tonight. Uh, with that, I would like to introduce you to Ahmed Khan and he'll take things up from there.
Thank you very much, Mark. Ahmed, your chairman, my rose. Uh, thank you for being on the studio. My name is Ahmed Ahmed Khan, last name three H A N. I'm the founder and CEO of Southern American Company, who have run a foundation and a large construction center. Some of them are constructed by a project and let it operate for its studies. But I want to tell you about all these financial personally. But we don't want to waste money for the reasons, to the events. And I was a wild question of the job. With my guys, I'm the manager, I'm the owner, I'm the chief. So when you come down, I would have a
If I could interrupt you just a little. It's very nice that this is your personal viewing app. Is this going to be tied up?
It's not tied up, it's sort of changeable. So the reason is, I was I was a man of some sense and really I didn't understand what it was coming to me. This was a very good discovery. But it's out, I'm not going to tell you. So just say that, we have my endos. So actually, because I'm a man of some sense, I'm very involved and I do understand that the property and everything, all of us should be proud of. The second is, I was such a person because I was doing the right is, I was in the swamp, it's as uh 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 my sister and my brother and she had a handle for a man who didn't be, and she tried to do what was on. But second, I've just passed nothing. So she was not married. So she was also a woman for a relationship. So when we are doing this presentation, when I'm signing this, I wanted to show that this is not well you know, the problem there. And the problem that I want to show that every output that we have, but you know, represent is very similar with the driving as well. You know, it's been a long time, it's not the same as this. And that is sure that we are, we are, we can help provide you with this much. This is a much, a very, a very, and then I want to add this and I said, I'm not, we are trying to ensure that we're fine. And I would, and showing a high level. I never did a run, I never did a shot, I looked at the eyes and I didn't know what to do. I'm basically not showing those. And I'm looking at it for some time. When I, when I see it for people standing out, I remember I was strong, hey, somebody there, and I saw a hundred people. And we said, that's fine. I said, wonderful. But I didn't, I said, why not? I said, why not? He's going to watch him fall, he will be there on your hand, and we're not going to move again. He was a strong man, I would love the word, and he would see a highlight and so that I might have asked you to make sense of it, but when I went to talk about, I would be interested in what you were saying. Let me show you.
Thank you, Ahmed. Hello, everyone. My name is Hassan Sayed. Uh, I'm the project manager uh for this development. And uh the material that we have displayed here uh is supposed to illustrate our vision, our scope of what we'd like to do to contribute to this project. Um, this
You have to clarify, this is a a rendering. You're not going to build it exactly today, are you?
Yes, sir, I am.
Going to build it exactly as presented?
Yes.
Or Mark is an exhibit?
Yes, Mark is exhibit number three.
For a site plan then for the building of that?
Yes, the aerial views for the building. Uh, we will get the architectural, we have plans. And the site plan is exhibit two. This is a rendering of exhibit two and three D. We have incorporated some of those materials in your binders. So if uh you wish to take a closer look at it, you're you're welcome to inspect them upfront or or looking inside the binders. Uh, this project is also something that's a labor of love for me. I personally took a great deal of time designing it. It's something that I hope everybody else will appreciate. There are elements to this project that were quite challenging, but you know, luckily with the team that we have, the architect, the engineers, uh consultants, uh some of which are present here, uh they contributed greatly to what you see in front of you. Uh, the first exhibit, exhibit number three shows a bird's eye view from uh the right picture shows uh a northwest facing view from Myers Road. And the uh left picture shows a south east facing picture. I'm not stating. Is that correct? Yeah. Exhibit four illustrates uh a daytime as well as a nighttime uh front elevation for uh the townhomes. As you can see, the uh detail that we took in designing it, there's stone as well as a combination of exotic wood, metal and a canopy which even the underside of of which has has a wood grain texture. Uh, the the townhomes are unique in the sense that they don't have your your typical features that, you know, other townhomes have in the area. There's a development at York Town uh currently by D R Horton. Uh, something that if if someone wishes to compare our our design versus theirs, they can see that we took a great deal of time in incorporating features that normally don't go into these developments. This is the rear elevation um exhibit five that shows uh the garage as well as the rooftop terrace. Um, it's it's also the master bedroom, I believe, uh of the the mid-level in the townhome. Yes, the rooftop deck uh which also includes uh, you know, quite uh a decent amount of of open space as well as a a covered balcony. Exhibit six is uh architectural plan and it gives you the elevations from the fronts, the left and the right, as well as the uh floor layout from the basement, first floor, second floor, as well as the rooftop. The rooftop has uh what we like to call a glass house. And it has a great deal of appeal to us. It's like the crown jewel on top of this house. It's a beautiful element. I don't think any other development in Lombard has this. As well as there's a a covered area of pergola that will have a a small bath balcony off of it. And it shows, you know, we tried to incorporate a design where it has living space both inside and outside that people could enjoy. Exhibit seven is an illustration of the area with its uh, you know, park nearby, Knowles Park, which Ahmed had referred to. It also shows uh the Taiwanese Community Church nearby as well as York Township's office.
Just to note if I can, uh it's Mark Daniel again. Um, there are two other parks. You have a park east of Myersville Roosevelt and then Co-op Park is about a five-minute walk to the northwest of the site. It's more the interior of the Co-op subdivision that runs west of School Street.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, could you leave that up for just a second? Uh, if you look at exhibit seven, it also shows you the rooftop area. And I don't know if everybody can see this, but we have dedicated both the glass house, the balcony off of the glass house, as well as an outdoor, you know, recreation area, kitchen area, whatever you want to call it, barbecue, and some green space. All incorporated on the rooftop.
Uh, there's some I didn't want to explain, but it's Um, good evening. My name is Jun Guan Lin. It's I'm a civil engineer and surveyor of this project. I'm with Reach Line Consultants. And uh the address is one-six-six-one O-Cut Row, A U C U T T in Montgomery, Illinois, zip code six-zero-five-three-eight. I'm sorry, my my name is spelled as J I U N dash G U A N G. Last name Lin, L I N, and I go by my last name. Uh, so this this property is actually one-point-nine-eight acres, close to four acres in area and uh currently there is just it's com- it's composed of redlands. And on the middle us has the existing building on it, which will be demolished to uh to make for the development. And from a utility connection standpoint, we already, we actually have the existing water mains on the east side which is east side of the property, which is on Myers Road and the west side of the property, which is on School Street. And we decided after talking to DuPage County Public Works Department, we decided to uh take the water, drinking water from the water main on on School Street and we're going to make a loop out of of this whole fifteen buildings. Uh, for the sanitary connections, uh this area is under jurisdiction of Black Creek Water Reclamation District. And there is a main hall, maybe a block to the west of us. Uh, to the uh block west of the school street. So we do plan on heading to that main hall and make the connection. However, there is some, uh there is a technical complication uh in the way which results in a forced service which requires a a pump to uh for service to uh to make the connection. And this concept has been run with, run by Black Creek Water Reclamation District, who is, who has no objection to it. However, uh as a condition, this uh future future lift station and the and the force service, force men will be owned by the future, the owner of this property, which is H O A in the case. From a stormwater management standpoint, currently, as a property sits, generally speaking, the property slopes from the west to the east towards, from School Street towards Myers Road with the northeast corner of the property being the lowest point. And the property, the development, because we're the 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 newly impervious area has exceeds a threshold of the detention requirement and what we call B M P requirement, best management practice requirement. So those detention and B B M P will be required and will be provided. So for the detention provision, we do plan on proposing an oversized storm sewer pipe that runs underneath the two existing driveways uh to make up the required detention. For the B M P, best management practice, uh there are two options. At this point, uh there it's going to be a combination of the rain garden that will be located in the east yard of this improvements, which is running through Myers Road. And the triwell, the underground triwell that will recite underground. So two, so two of them in combination make up the required volume for this B M P. Uh, so far, we have pre-agreement with stormwater staffs of the county twice and like Mr. Chairman's, red, there is no objection at this point, but there will be the detailed design will definitely has not been come up with yet, but it will be subject to the uh stormwater staff's review. And we also had a conversation with Do-Dot staff regarding the stormwater connection because we will be connecting, we will be running our storm sewer into the storm sewer that's owned by Do-Dot underneath Myers Road. And again, uh we all have a neutral understanding that a future uh detailed design will be subbed there to the county's review. Uh, that's all I got. From an engineering standpoint, thank you.
Good, thanks for the question.
Uh, from a perspective of drainage, I don't want to neighbors here, is it accurate to say that the project as designed can accept and convey the stormwater flowing from off-site onto site as well as the stormwater necessary because the development is being constructed?
Yes, yeah, that's definitely the case. In fact, uh upon the project is developed, from a stormwater standpoint, uh it will be improvements to our downstream neighbors.
And uh especially because neighbors are here, the first thing that you mentioned is it's all installed underground, correct?
That is correct.
I think that's all I have. Thank you. And if you can pop up and introduce yourself to everybody, that would be great. Uh, I'll try to
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Anne Maloney. I'm with the firm of Johnson Research Group. I'm an urban planner with twenty-five years of experience in the Chicagoland area. I'm here to talk to you today a little bit about uh affordable housing or workforce housing. Um, I think you've all heard the term affordable housing and a a more a more recent is the idea of workforce housing. Workforce housing is really about um what we're facing increasingly where uh your means exceeds or your mean does not match thirty percent of your housing costs. So ideally, uh to be, for a housing to be affordable, your mortgage and utility cost should cost thirty percent or less of your income. And so that's what we're hot here to talk today about. Um, and the reality is that nationally, regionally and locally uh housing affordability is becoming uh the topic of the day. Um, home prices uh have risen twice the rate of wage growth over the last ten years. Um, more than nineteen million renter renter households uh have spent more than thirty percent of their income. That was a statistic from two thousand twenty-one. Uh, they estimate, census estimates that in twenty-nineteen, oh, over three-point, there was a shortage of over three-point-eight million homes um that were affordable to people. That was exacerbated further by uh COVID. Um, and the the trend of homes, particularly starter homes, has decreased over the years uh with twenty-nineteen hitting or twenty-twenty-one hitting a record low. Um, and that that's trend has continued. Uh, these uh patterns are are present in DuPage County as well. Home prices, as you may have seen, have increased substantially. Um, and people who want to live and work in DuPage find it increasingly harder to do so. That creates stress on middle-income homeowners um uh who want to live and work nearby. Um, and as people try to find for the homes, they go out further and then as they go out further, uh their other costs increase, like transportation to get to and from. Um, oh, okay. Um, as Mark said, my in the in the booklet, you'll find our little, my little presentation, a little bit more about me, uh starting on page seventeen of the booklet. Um, so we have there are a number of studies at the national level, at the regional level, uh Urban Land Institute, Harvard Study Center for Housing Studies. Um, American Planning Association have done a number of studies about affordable housing for a number of decades now. They show that uh affordable housing or workforce housing doesn't negatively affect um uh property values if it's if it is done, considering complimentary uh to the neighborhood. So what these studies show is that the answer to uh affordable housing is solved by at the local level. Some of these solutions include uh merely building more affordable units. It sounds, it sounds simple, but it's not, it's not. And preserving affordable housing units that exist today. Making uh local, local um governments can make public land available uh to developers and developments. And then regulatory changes uh at the zoning level, at the incentive level, um uh removing those barriers to high cost of development. And then lastly, property tax relief. These are just some of the few solutions that can be done at the local level uh that are being explored, I know, by many municipalities, including, as I understand it, uh DuPage County as a whole. Um, that's kind of my little snapshot. Uh, and I'm happy to answer questions or Okay.
Don't do your questions at the end if they haven't. Um, so if I if I can comment while Mr. Bradley uh makes his way to the podium. Uh, there is an an element of need uh that plays a role in planning and development factors. So Ian touched on that from a national, regional and local perspective. Even within the neighborhood, um there are workforce housing problems. Uh, many of the labors will remember a restaurant, uh Usmani requirement is opening on the south side of Roosevelt Road. Um, the individual owner of that restaurant was actually sent to half a dozen properties that he could possibly acquire for workforce housing because he can't find enough housing for his staff, chefs, management, things like that. And this is literally at the end of the block and just a little bit west next to Pep Boys where this restaurant is being built this year. So there is a a distinct need in this neighborhood. You'll hear from Mr. Abel. You'll hear from Mr. Abel that the area is proximate to the three thirteen bus route, which gets you to Yorktown, and from there, that's the hub for uh pace in DuPage County. Uh Mr. Bradley is going to talk a bit about the specifics here. Uh what we're dealing with is not waiting for the county to open up policy or to establish a trust or to use government property. What we're doing is the developer here is undertaking the risk and providing the benefit of the workforce housing as a percentage of units. Uh as described in the materials that we've submitted, it's thirty units. From a zoning and planning perspective, obviously, you're dealing with thirty units. And then you can consider the benefit of workforce housing, which will be five or six units, depending upon how discussions go with the county, uh if this has your blessing and the county board's approval. Uh Tom, if you can step up and then we'll get through your testimony and move into the remainder of the standards for the planning or development.
Put this here. So I'm very tired. I don't want to hold there. Mark. Actually, I'm right here at the podium. Really? All right. Mark, thanks for taking up the time to do a walk from the corner to the podium. With your little speech, I really appreciate it. Um ladies and gentlemen, members of the ZBA, my name is Thomas Bradley. I am a founder and president of Fifth Avenue Capital Partners. Uh we are a developer and developer services organization. Uh while not formally part of Ahmed's project and development, uh I have been asked to come up here and impart what little bit of information I've gathered over the last thirty-five years of development to you. Um and I promise that this is going to be entertaining. I don't know any jokes. The only magic trick I know is the ability to disappear instantly in the face of a hostile crowd. So I'm going to leave it up to you as to whether or not I want to see that. So. Um so first of all, is in regards to the term workforce housing, which is what I've been doing for the last twenty-plus years. There is no formal definition of workforce housing. The closest you can get is the Urban Land Institute says that workforce housing is housing that is made financially available to households whose income is between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Now, the area median income is adjusted annually. It's based on the entire area that's decided on by the Census tract. And it can range anywhere from at sixty percent, for example, you're at about sixty thousand dollars a year in income for the county. At a hundred and twenty percent, you're somewhere in the range of about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um when it comes to for sale housing, workforce housing generally falls in an income range between about eighty and a hundred and twenty percent. And in there, we find there are people who uh can afford a little bit more that don't want to rent, but cannot necessarily afford what I think we all agree is extraordinarily inflated housing prices and costs nowadays. So by developer setting up a portion, or even in some cases, all of this project to be available for workforce housing and setting those restrictions regarding the household income, again, between generally eighty and a hundred and twenty percent, that developer receives certain incentives. In some cases, it's incentives that are being discussed today here, such as density increase and other items. In some cases, what the developer can offer is they can offer loans or through lenders, Wind Trust, for example, is one of the largest, who does a lot of workforce housing loans. They can offer loans to those people at between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent, who generally could not afford the amount that they can get through certain loan programs. I think some of your handouts may have those programs outlined in them. But there are several states and federal loan programs that are personate, but that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent income level can have access to that people of greater income levels might not necessarily be able to do that. Um in addition, Ahmed has agreed to keep those homes that he's designated as workforce housing at a lower price point than the others, thereby making them additionally available to people with lower area median incomes. I know that the county and the board is very interested in making sure that those homes always remain available for people at between eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. I think a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-five percent is being discussed. And there's ways to do that. You can do deed restrictions, you can do trusts. So there's definitely ways to ensure that uh those homes that Ahmed is going to be uh dedicating to workforce housing constantly remain that way. Um that's about all I have at the moment. That's as entertaining as I get. But I am happy to answer any and all questions, including Mark's, who may ask me one.
So Tom, just for the process in general, if you're a real estate attorney at a closing and someone is trying to purchase a workforce housing property, is it accurate to say that there are checkpoints there? You have the title company that reviews the deed and the workforce housing agreement that would apply to the property first, correct?
Yeah. And so again, when I talked about the loan programs that are available to those people at a hundred and twenty or eighty percent or a hundred and twenty-five percent of the area median income, the lender who provides that loan to the borrower certifies the income of that borrower. Another, without that, they wouldn't be available, that loan would not be available to that person. So there's a formal certification process that goes on. It's done by the lender. If the person doesn't qualify, they're not eligible for the loan.
And then with respect to rentals, is it accurate to say that rentals are also leased? And on the rental basis, you would have to make sure there's a qualifying tenant. And if that tenant gets above the a hundred and forty-five percent, that tenant would not be able to renew?
Well, the rental industry is an entirely different category of affordability and workforce housing. So I don't know how far we want to get into that. But I mean, what I can say is that when it comes to apartment owners, or let's just say landlords, who are setting aside their apartments for people of below the area median income, naturally, when they lease to that person, when the person signs the lease, when they do the qualifications and the background searches and everything else, there's an income search that is done on that person again to verify that their household income is within the correct range.
And then in this instance, uh we expect, oh, go ahead, that's fine, I think. We'll do questions at the end.
It's all votes.
Thank you, Tom. So in this instance, we expect to have discussions with the county about uh protecting the benefit. Obviously, there is a real estate, an owner of the real estate. Uh that owner of the real estate, according to the duration that they own the property, will be able to gain a certain percentage of appreciation and value. But that appreciation and value will be capped. And that's by annual surveys uh that go on in relation to the uh the properties at issue. So Dan, if you can step up uh and introduce yourself. Uh we are going to move into uh Dan's covering the need in part, and he's covering the impact. So you'll hear quite a bit of that uh from Dan Bezegos. He's a realtor in the area with substantial practice. I'll go ahead and let you do the talking on this one.
Appreciate it. Chair chair people, chair folks here. Uh appreciate the time here today. My again, my name is Dave Bezegos. Uh I'm a local Realtor. Uh I work in a team with my wife. Uh we're a top ranking team both in DuPage uh and nationwide. Uh we work both in commercial and residential real estate. And today, um you know, we're discussing the gap in housing uh in the Lombard area, as well as I'm talking about the uh the values and key features of these individual properties. And lastly, talking about the impact of these individual properties uh on the local community. So right now, if you go um through and you you could see the actual gap in housing in your packets there, I list out what the current inventory is in the Lombard marketplace. And you'd be surprised to see right now, if if you look at the multiple listing service, uh the actual number of homes that are currently on the marketplace, this is all values. They were a hundred to over a million. Uh there's only thirty-five current homes in the Lombard marketplace. Uh when we look at zero, it shows nineteen. So that difference is because the uh multiple listing service shows private listings. So the individual would have to actually be working with an agent uh to see that agent to agent network. Uh so you could just see there that the value of homes on the market is is very low right now. Uh that's for individual detached homes. Uh when we're looking at the attached homes right now, so these are condos, uh these are townhomes. Uh there's seventeen listings, sixteen on Zillow. So it just, that alone just shows you uh the lack of housing that is available right now, again, the past three years. Say it again?
You know what? Hold it. Let them do their presentation. If you want to make comments, you can make them then. But if everybody talks, it's going to go on and on. So you'll get the courtesy where you speak of the silence. If it doesn't stop right now, a couple of people are going to be removed. We'll figure out who they are. But this, due to currency, and then nothing gets me mader than when you get people talking and then they get up to make their comments and they had their mouths going so they didn't hear what they were asking. So having said that, I'm going to calm it down. We were doing real well, so let's stick with that.
Totally. Appreciate it. Uh so we'll go on. Uh we do list out there.
Here's your question. What does homes for sale have to do with this presentation of rentals? A little bit.
So you know, here it is.
He's going to answer it.
Uh can I?
You just spoke at length of the number of homes for sale in the Lombard area. This project are not homes for sale. What does? Are you going to let him talk? All right, why don't you step in and we'll let him talk. You made the comment, you went through your whole presentation. What does that have to do with this presentation?
So we will be the actual homes that will be for sale.
I understand what they are. What does it have to do with this presentation?
Uh so we listed out in the packet there as far as the listings. So we're going to be um showing the gap in the housing that's available and how this could potentially solve, you know, some of that gap in housing in the Lombard marketplace.
Do you believe that the people you are doing this, that should be available to this, are in a position to buy a home?
It's so revealed all the time.
Based on the people that you are saying this is being built.
Workforce housing.
Are they in a position to buy a home?
So individuals are working in the Lombard area for housing. Um I I guess I don't understand.
I just, I'm trying to understand why you're talking about the number of homes for sale when you're doing a project where no homes will be for sale.
Well, they will be for sale after the.
Do you find that these will not be for sale?
They will be for sales. Yep.
Then you've answered.
Um so next, we we did show an aerial view of the property. Uh again, showing, you know, there's there's an ask, there's an ask for green space uh with these properties. There's several local parks in the area, and there'll be green space surrounding these town uh townhomes here. Now, here in the exhibit, we show the individual units. And we go through the basement. Uh here, that is an option where if an individual wants to build out the basement, the base property is going to have three bedrooms, two and a half baths. If you want to build out the basement, uh that's going to add an additional bedroom as well as an additional full bath. Uh you'll see there, there is a uh open space there to hang out as well as uh a wet bar, if you wanted to include that there. Now, if you go to.
Which one are, I'm guessing it's exhibit eight.
Exhibit eight.
It's exhibit nine.
Now, exhibit nine here, uh that goes up to the main level four. Uh you'll notice there, uh this is, again, you're going to see the luxury theme throughout the property. Uh with this, you will see uh it will have an open concept. It's it's the exhibitor. It will have an opening concept as well as uh higher appliances. Uh you're going to see the garage there. It's going to be a heated garage. Uh it's going to also come, each base property is going to come with an electric car charger there. And every single floor here will be nine foot tall ceilings. Now, go ahead to the next floor. This is exhibit nine. Uh this is, we don't have three bedrooms, two full baths. Uh again, nine foot tall ceilings. Uh the way you're inside, you'll see the rooftop. Uh that, again, another open space as well. Each base model is going to have a glass house. Again, you will have the option uh for this space, you also build out the rooftop. Uh and again, this is again another space that's available for individuals that are looking to get uh more outdoor space um in in the community. Okay, so you know, next, just talking about the impact of of uh this would have on the community uh and and the values of the homes. Uh so I don't know if we showed the comparative. Okay.
Exhibit number twenty at page.
Page thirty-two.
Page thirty-two.
So page thirty-two, if you go here, what we did is, again, I will show here a comparable development that was uh about half a mile north of this community here. What we show here is a a comparable development with the same amount of buildings that were built out. With this one, we show the houses surrounding this development. And what I determined here was the current market values and predevelopment values. Now, this development was done uh right around two thousand one to two thousand four. So showing where the current market values, those were taken uh from the MLS, uh from the remain application, as well as kind of current sales right now. And then the predevelopment value, that was taken uh where you saw the change in price of the tax assessment. And so we're going to return just an estimated uh predevelopment value as well as sales that happened right before the development. Uh so you can see across the board, the values of all gone off. Uh again, some of them are highlighted because individuals did add uh to those individual properties. For example, the eleven oh four Southwest Moore Myers uh had a substantial increase in value. They did add much to the to the house and and um to that specific property. But overall, you've seen over time, it doesn't provide, it doesn't cause a negative impact uh to the uh surrounding properties. So I'll pause there. Uh I don't know if you have any questions, Mark.
Uh the comparable development was at Cooper Way. And that area you mentioned, there was about a half mile north, was Westmore Myers Road on the east side, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, man. At this point, we'd like to have Mike Worthman come up uh from Carolina, who will be very brief on this one.
Don't forget our questions at the other side. You have a question for them. I have to say once more, the questions will come when you get up, you can make comments or questions. We're going to finish their presentation. Whether you yell over everybody in that, how do I make it clear? No questions, no comments, no remarks from the crowd till the presentation is done. Any questions on that? I'll grant your question on that. All right, good. We'll move on. I'll make one other statement to you now, too. We have limited our meetings to two hours. After two hours, we come from jobs. We're not sharp anymore. So if it goes on as you do this, you're delaying the process. So we'll continue from there.
Uh good evening. My name is Mike Worthman. I'm a principal with the firm of Koenig Lindgren O'Hara Bona Inc. Uh we're a traffic and transportation firm out of Rosemont. Uh I'm a registered professional engineer uh in the state of Illinois and been practicing for probably thirty-five years now. Uh we were retained to conduct a traffic study for the post-development. Uh just to give you a brief summary, um as you heard, um the development will consist of fifteen duplexes or thirty units. Um as you know, as the board, you've heard us before, uh the volume of traffic generated by these thirty units uh will be relatively limited. Um as we all know, uh in the morning, the traffic that's leaving is distributed over about a three-hour period. Likewise, distributed about a three-hour period on the way in. So that traffic that will be generated by these three thirty units, excuse me, will now probably be generated in one hour. So that traffic that will be generated by these three, thirty units, excuse me, will now probably be generated in one hour. It will be distributed over several hours. Access to the facility, and I'm looking at this site plan right here. Glasses on, excuse me. Will be provided via two access drives on minor road. The north access drive will be restricted to right turn in, right turn out movements. And the southern one will be a right turn out only movement. We've been working with DUCO closely on this, and they have conceptually approved the locations and the design of the drive. We're still tweaking some of the design with them. In addition, secondary access will be provided via two access drives on the Skull Street, which is located west on the west property line there. Overall, the existing roadway system, we looked at four intersection in the area, looked at School Street, Myers, Roosevelt, and Fourteenth. All of them have sufficient reserve capacity to accommodate the additional traffic that will be generated by the development. The access will provide flexible access to the development up to distribute that traffic along the roadway system. More importantly, I'm going to grab this one. We want to know that data now, are you? Just, we're looking at the aerial photo, number my section, page? Page thirty-seven. As we all know, York Center is.
You know, I can't read what the exhibit numbers are, so if you're downplaying as you start, so we'll be able to put them in.
Page thirty-seven of the. It should just be exhibit twenty.
Is that what it's marked then, Joe?
Yes, it will be marked as exhibit twenty, but the page says. Just quickly, York Center Elementary School is located just southwest of the site. It's on the south side of Fourteenth Street, just west of School Street. The school has about two hundred students. We've been out there several times. It operates very well given the lower number of students at that school. More importantly, the impact of this development on that school will be very limited mainly because most of our traffic will be exiting if the youth school street. They'll be coming down and making a left to get out to Myers Road. Very little traffic will be making a right to go west through the neighborhood. Most of our traffic will be going straight out to Myers Road. So the impact on the school will be very, very minimal. Thank you. I'll be here for any questions.
Quick thing, Mark. That says either thirteen or eighteen, I can't read all the way, and he was saying it was twenty. Are these going to be?
Twenty is the binder, and page thirty-seven within exhibit twenty is the area that shows the school.
Okay. But he was pointing on this one, and this is thirteen.
Yeah, I was wondering, we had a lineup, and it turned out that it was a lineup to capture the driveway into the school, so we left the areas, page thirty-seven and exhibit twenty.
All right, well, how, all right, is this the exhibit that's mentioned in here as thirteen?
No, it's page thirty-seven.
This one that's right there, it doesn't say thirteen.
Yeah, exhibit thirteen is in the binder as exhibit thirteen. This is the one with, on Westmore Myers Road. All right, Mike, if I could, very quickly, just one question for you because we do want to submit. Exhibit number twenty-one, is exhibit number twenty-one the traffic report prepared by KALAWAY?
Yes, it is. Date of February ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'd like to have Jeff Cook step up. His background appears at page forty. He's with Gary Weber and Associates.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Jeff Cook, I'm with Gary Weber Associates. I'm an AICP planner. My background is in community planning and city management. I've worked for twenty-one years for local municipalities before joining Gary Weber Associates. Our ecological firm prepared the wetland delineation for the project, or determination, should I say. They found a negative findings report. There are no wetlands present on this site, both from looking at the regulatory maps as well as a field visit to the site. Our firm also prepared the landscape plan, and the landscape plan was prepared with a number of things in mind. One of the major things was to look at providing screening of some of the onsite parking facilities that would otherwise be visible from the public roadway. We focused on providing some taller evergreen trees near those areas. They're eight-foot-tall evergreens as proposed. We've also focused on meeting the or exceeding the requirements of the DuPage County buffer requirements. That would be both up against Myers and School Road. And the northern south offers, we've included a six-foot fence, which on its own makes the standards for providing the buffer. But in addition to that, we've also provided some additional landscaping and taller shade trees in those areas. I'll also mention. If the exhibit, the landscape is exhibit fifteen A, that's presented here to the board and the audience. And on page two is exhibit fifteen B. And exhibit fifteen B, you can see the School Street side of the roadway where you have the buffering also shown with a mixture of evergreens, shrubs, ornamental trees and such. One of the things I did want to mention, Engineer Lynn had earlier talked about rain gardens. And we've been working closely with the engineering firm to locate and size those. Our ecological team is very adept at specifying not only the plant material that goes into those areas, but also the maintenance monitoring to make sure that those are both installed and perform as intended. With that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe, if you can step up. Joe Engel, I think, everyone knows who Joe is. He's been around the block a few times, and he's our planning and land use consultant for the project. He's going to be addressing a few, actually quite a few of the standards related to planning and developments and the exceptions that apply.
As Mark said, I'm known to the zoning board of appeals, but maybe not to the audience. I have a degree in city and regional planning. I've been doing this for over fifty years. My public background is I was director of the county development department for seventeen years. I was head of the economic development commission for the city of Chicago for five years, and I've had my own firm since then. Obviously, I'm very, very familiar with this area, having been the director of county development. I was in charge of planning, zoning, community development, block grants, everything for the seventeen years with the county as staff of about forty. Also, in this particular area, I have been planning consultants to the city of Oak Brook Terrace for ten years. I keep their plan up to date and their zoning ordinance up to date. So again, I'm very, very familiar with what's going on in this particular area. I was asked to take a look at this development and look at how it fits in with the surrounding area. And. We have this number we have on this, Mark. Excuse. Exhibit A and B, a lay of your soul, and first shield sixteen A. Yeah, do you have my copies? All right, I'll start with the, and each one of the zoning members has a copy of these, of these maps. They handed them out before the meeting. You can see basically, the, this particular area, the county is rather, unincorporated area is rather well represented. Like I say, during the seventeen years I was with the county, it was the fastest-growing period. We went from three hundred and twenty-five thousand up to seven hundred thousand people just in that seventeen-year period. And so keep in mind that a lot of the development in this particular area has been here for quite some time. As you go into the Roosevelt Road corridor, that's where all your newer development is. And also the city of Oak Brook Terrace, there's a lot of new development in that area. Oak Brook itself, I actually was on the design team for Oak Brook years ago for Paul Butler. It's one of my first jobs. So as you look at this particular area, you have to try and determine what would be the appropriate use for the subject property. It faces Myers. Doesn't need any other improvements in terms of road network that serve the individual units. So from a density standpoint, the road network is there. It's Myers Road. You're in an area, and I understand from talking to county staff that there have been some problems with this subject property and the area around it in terms of enforcement and uses that were not appropriate for the property. But that's been mitigated now by the purchase and the proposed development of this property. So when you look at the immediate surrounding area, to the south is a storage facility that used to be a township garage facility and is now used for storage. It was very difficult to, obviously couldn't enter the property and have not been able to delineate exactly what happens in there. But obviously, it's a throughlot with storage. As you go to the joining property to the north, that has been the next into Lombard. And it also is somewhat, not exactly R1 single-family. It has all sites, storage of steel material, large garage facility, had a home, and probably, again, will be ready for some future development. As you continue to the north, obviously now you get into the commercial uses, the kinder care facility is there. And then you have the Marathon Gas at the corner, at the northeast-west end, and the CVS on the opposite corner. So you have a very, very intensive development along Roosevelt Road. My office and my home are in Glen Helen, just about six blocks to the other Roosevelt Road. And I've seen the Roosevelt Road develop since I was with the county. I served the county in nineteen seventy. And so that's how long my term of experience in this area is. So what we have is a property that is sort of settle in between an intense commercial corridor and then we have the storage unit to the south of our property. We have a York Township garage facility opposite, that's used for the storage of chips and things of that nature. Not an intensive use, but still a lot of residential use. And then as you proceed to the south, you have a church facility and a funeral home, and then the York Township offices, actually. So to assume that between Roosevelt Road and Sixteenth Street, that someone's going to put it in an R1 state home, just isn't logical. That's why I'm somewhat suspect of why Lombard is zoning the property directly to the north, R1's development. To the west of the property is the co-op facility. And I'm very familiar with that, even in the years when I was, seventeen years I was with the county, we worked very closely with that group, and they've done a tremendous job in keeping that area on top of all of the neighborhood. There's no doubt about that. And so it was important, when I looked at the site plan, that we made sure, we made sure that the architecture, they'll be adjacent to it, and especially the landscaping treatment, and the commitment to no parking on School Street, that those will all be part of the conditional use. This is a conditional use, plan development is a conditional use in this district. And therefore, zoning board and the county board can put numerous commissions. I was sort of surprised when the chairman mentioned about the fact that what you see on those drawings is what you're going to get. And I could sense what was going on in his mind, that they probably could make that one of the conditions, that what you're seeing tonight is what is going to be built. So in my professional opinion, from a planning and zoning standpoint, I think the development is extremely doable and fits in carefully with what's going on on that Myers Road corridor. The workforce thing is something that even when I was the county, we tried to include some way of getting more modern housing into our developments. And I have to compliment, especially for us, who's working with a committee to the workforce. So this isn't something that we're just dreaming up tonight. The county's been thinking about it for some time. And. As that question about the housing, what's happening, and when you see it in the traffic patterns, is being, it's getting to be more and more difficult for people to locate in DuPage County. That's why I think I've noticed the traffic patterns, they're constantly increasing going to the south, to Will County in places that way. So this is just another opportunity to make sure we keep a whole workforce in DuPage County that they can have housing that's affordable. The other things that I take into consideration as a planner, and go through the standards, I can say we meet all the standards in terms of having no negative impact based on meeting all the setback requirements. But more importantly, again, looking at what makes this site a very good site for our housing that we're proposing. And again, take into consideration, I actually walked it. And that's the other good thing about Myers Road is that the fact that it does have sidewalks. It's very easy for anyone in this, in this development to get to the York Center Elementary School. I actually measured it from a walking standpoint, not using the way the crow flies. And it's three hundred and fifty feet from the center of the proposed development to the front door of the elementary school. So it makes it a great place for a family to live. You have the Knowles Community Park right behind the school. And then if you're of that persuasion, you've got the Montini High School goes by, and things of that nature. And then from the standpoint of, so not only just a good location for higher density development, you can have all of these community facilities available. Another thing as a planner that we, another thing as a planner that you, that we advocate is that a use of this nature be as close to public transportation as possible. Obviously, Roosevelt Road and the proximity even to the Lombard train station is reasonable. But more importantly, we have just kitty corner, one arc corner and in the opposite corner, we have the pace stops. And that's the Pace Route three thirteen, which goes to Yorktown. And from Yorktown, you can make connections almost anywhere in DuPage County. So the site is well-located from the transportation standpoint, whether it's individual car, train, or bus routes. I also looked at where, that's the next exhibit, is it on the mark?
What's the? Yeah. Sixteen B?
Sixteen, you can, somewhere you can look at both exhibits, but starting with the the first exhibit, you'll see up in the upper right-hand corner is the development that was talked about earlier on Cooper Way. It's an R3 PUD. Keep in mind that under that, that's within Lombard. And Roger Lombard has developed that into a very nice townhouse development. And under that planning designation, now that particular. And uh, under that planning designation, now that particular uh, unit um, is in the density range of approximately uh, depending on you looking at it on a gross basis, almost ten units per acre. Um, the um, district that's that it's in is the R3 PUD and that actually allows up to twelve point four dwelling units per acre. So if someone wanted to do a more affordable development, maybe the units a little smaller, they could go as high as twelve units per acre. Um, the uh, um, the next two developments, well actually, one of the remaining ones also shows at the bottom of the exhibit. But it's also shows up better on the um, larger exhibit, is the Abbey Wood Townhouses. And that also is an R4 PUD in Lombard, and that's at eight, nine, almost nine units per acre. Um, then as you go to the um, on Main and Twentieth, and that's down, where's the other exhibit?
Just before we make the mention, thirteen is the
Thirteen is the, thirteen is the uh, Cochrane Road, a development, and if you look at it in detail, you can see there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven structures. They are very close to uh, single family development. And uh, our other witness was talking about, just one second, this is the home that's had major, major improvements. Uh, and is in a very high price range. Uh, you'll see it on the chart, but it is kitty corner from that development, and so there, there's been no adverse effect uh, from that zoning and development uh, in terms of development of, well, traditional single family in the surrounding area. Uh, this is the one at Main, exhibit fourteen, is the one at uh, Main Street and Main and Twentieth Street. And again, you can see that um, it's in the range of approximately um, ten, twenty-nine and twenty, I didn't calculate it, and the fact that there's a detention bond. Fact that ours is a, again, an inner-city type development. No road system because the road wired is already there. No detention, we're putting the detention entirely underground, we have the rainforest and everything. This development had to develop a um, um, detention facility, and he has to add its own road and cul-de-sacs. And so it has a um, a density, even with those uh, facilities, that in the range of, of ten dwelling units per acre. And uh, as you know, what you heard, the big one proposing is fifteen in a much higher density area. Uh, this has single family and a totally around it.
So also, pardon? Is the property you're looking at, exhibit number fourteen also zone R3?
Yes. That's an R3 PUD. Going back to the aerial photograph, just two other areas that we want to identify, over the big one. Again, looking at the uh, the corridor, you will notice uh, as I mentioned earlier, I am the planner for City Unitarian Consulting Planner, you have Berkshire, yeah, Oak Brook Terrace. Uh, as you can see, Berkshire Place is a um, rather high-density development running onto Myers Road. And uh, again, very, very well-designed, uh, never had any negative uh, comments about that development. Uh, even though it is, it is at one of the higher densities other than the, the high-rise multiple. But it is one of the higher density, single-family uh, residential areas. And then the other big one that developed in the county, actually when I was uh, the county also, is the uh, Brandywine. And again, that is a total townhouse development and has not had a negative impact uh, on, on the surrounding uses. That pretty much takes care of the surrounding land use and zoning in the greater area and in the area immediately surrounding the subject property.
Joe, do you have an opinion on the solo classification that should apply if this property were brought into R1 by annexation?
Uh, yes, it would be into the um, R4 PUD, that allows up to twelve point four dwelling units per acre. And with the uh, workforce designation, could very easily get up to the fifteen units per acre, probably even higher. In terms of the uh, the standards in the ordinance, the uh, starting with the fact that the standards for the plan development to allow this to be, it's plan development uh, as a conditional use. And uh, there's no doubt in my mind that the proposed conditional use for a plan development is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this zoning ordinance. Um, the, the comprehensive plan has not been kept up to date in the county, and so uh, I have to look at this from the standpoint of uh, what would happen. And then that's based on what I just mentioned about its proximity to Roosevelt Road facing Myers, which is a Hepple Travel Road. Um, the fact that it's in close proximity to uh, community facilities and transportation. There's no doubt in my mind that this would have been put into a category on the plan that would be more in the realm of five to fifteen units per acre. That's one of the categories, that's the next highest category after the single family, is the five to fifteen. And that would accommodate uh, what is being prepared. Um, as I said, uh, the use will not be injurious to the neighborhood. Uh, based on its location, the landscaping, the fences, uh, the traffic generation, uh, that has been discussed, it's not gonna have an adverse effect. I think the fact that they've made a commitment to no parking on School Street helps the, that streets, that streetscape. Um, the cultural use uh, continues to, uh, won't have any adverse effect on later to adjacent properties. Um, the major adjacent properties, instead are to the south, that's a storage building. Uh, to the north, again, is sort of business-type use. And then where's more than adequate setback for the development to the west, which is the co-op properties. Uh, the traffic flow, you've heard testimony at that, there's no problem with that. Um, the design of the project affords future inclusion of land to the south. It's very possible that uh, the development to the south will uh, decide to do something similar. Uh, and we've left, there's enough room there for them to do a proper project. Um, I think that covers most of the um, standards that, that I'm concerned in. Um, yeah, no problem with the light and air, no negative impact. Uh, sufficient ingress and egress, you've heard that from our traffic consultants. Um, and it's in harmony with the general intent of the or, zoning ordinance and uh, a few, a comprehensive plan that I feel would be reasonable for the property.
All right, I'm gonna try to wrap it up if I can, I'm not gonna repeat uh, testimony, uh, just a couple of things to clean up. Joe, you mentioned when we meet the setbacks, the buildings respect the setbacks except for the no-fly line, correct?
Yes.
And the relief point really saw one of the street furnaces to an aisle for parking, correct?
Yes, all, no, all, all of the, I, you're correct, all of the setbacks are met except for the uh, the parking. And as you've indicated, the parking has been given some special attention uh, by the landscape architect to make sure that uh, they don't have a negative impact on the, the view from Myers.
So, thank you, Joe. So, quite a few years ago, back in the day, I represented the city of Oak Brook Terrace as, as city attorney and uh, the general trend in the area is to transition from Oak Brook Terrace planning to Lombard planning on Myers Road. Uh, Myers Road was always viewed as one of those key uh, thoroughfares, uh, it's not a major arterial, but it is a minor, and there's a lot that can be accessed, obviously, through Myers Road, I think all of you are familiar with it, it runs down the east side of the Yorktown Development Area. And it connects with Roosevelt and several communities down to Dallas Road. Um, and you head up north and, and you can hit North Avenue eventually through Villa Park. Um, this is an important location, and I, I wanna talk about Lombard just a little bit, there is a lot of Lombard the primary issue that we, that we have is density, and I've had this, this discussion with Lombard since the pandemic started. I used to represent the owner of the old Township Highway Department site directly south of us. In some of the areas, you'll see page thirty-seven of exhibit twenty, uh, that Mr. Worthman pointed out to you, you'll see that there are tons of vehicles parked out there. Uh, it was a truck storage facility before, it was an auto repair and truck repair facility before. Uh, my last experience was fighting with a landscape firm, Northwest, known in Timber, that was subject to code violations, I represented the landlord. And under Connor's prosecution with Paul's assistance, we eventually evicted that individual and the property was sold, and today the use is becoming more intense with that on our store. So what do we do? We place our garage where the garage is facing that use. So the homes on the north side of the property are doorsteps and front windows with a sidewalk. And of course, the fence screen and landscape screen. On the north side of the property, on occasion, you might see two cranes out there. Um, it's a rental property, it has some contractors work on it, um, it's been around for a long, long time. It's also been on the radar, I would think you could go about twenty to twenty-five years at the county, uh, in that Lombard because they've annexed it. Um, further north, uh, some of you may know the Ray Graham Association, it's one of the programs in DuPage County that does a lot for, for you and uh, special needs education. Uh, they were located on this street, um, within the same block, we have a kinder care, we have offices. Uh, we have commercial use, semi-commercial use at Roosevelt Road. Uh, so the block is bookended and it's not something that should continue to be zoned R0 or R1 in Lombard. In Lombard, the R0 classification is a home classification for properties that they bring in pursuant to annexation. Those properties are typically larger, they're county properties, they have law and septic, they have to connect to water and sewer. Once you connect to the water and sewer, you can drop to the smaller R3 or R4 lots. And you can increase your density. Uh, there is a demarcation, uh, you heard some of Joe's planning, our discussion, talking about the transition from the east side of school to the west side and beyond. The co-op certainly is a different neighborhood than what you see in this block. Period. Plain as day, and that, that is true. School Street is a line of demarcation where you would expect to see a transition from west to east. Streets are often used in that way from a planning perspective. Another thing we did with Lombard was we took a look at the street bunch. And we thought, all right, well, we were looking at this project a while back, I tried a townhome development, working from the south through this property, and we couldn't pull it off because of the expense. That was in twenty twenty, we called Bill Henneth in Lombard and we just couldn't work that development out. In this instance, Lombard sensed that his area is down uh, School Street, so they control the right-of-way. And with respect to that, we looked at Lombard's preferences, under the county's owner ordinance, we could do what the school does, if you look at page thirty-seven of exhibit twenty, you don't really have to, I'll tell you about it. But they have hidden parking off the street. And you can do that in the county. You can put your guest parking or your visitor parking head in off the right-of-way. And they can pull in from the right-of-way and back out into the right-of-way. We did not do that, because that doesn't meet Lombard's standards for their streetscape. So we have them pulling in and then we heavily landscaped that so that there's that screen above. On the density issue, uh, I knew from prior discussions uh, with Mr. Henneth about when I was tempted working from the south line up, it was not financially viable. Um, Mr. Henneth and I talked about density at length and the likelihood of an R3 zoning on this property, that's the twelve point four units per acre that Lombard allows. In this instance, that would allow us twenty-four, twenty-five properties, subdivided properties. Okay, these are lots that will be sold and each unit, I suppose, above the twenty-four is something that you might ask yourself, well, why would we give you that bonus? And are you asking for too much? And in the overall balance of the planning with development standards, we thought that thirty was appropriate. If you can get twenty-four, twenty-five units under the district and you have five or six of those as workforce housing, we, we've set five in the application materials, the county ultimately may ask for six. Uh, some of these range from ten, fifteen to twenty percent, so six would be the twenty percent range. But the reality is that thirty is not that far above what Lombard would allow as of right in their R3 district. Okay, so we have five units for the workforce housing and there's one bonus unit, maybe two. If we went six units, there's zero bonus units or one. So we thought that that was a fair balance in light of the, the term of development in the area, Mr. Eagle's testimony, comparison of the projects. And if you notice in exhibits thirteen, I'm sorry, yeah, thirteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, are the ones that Mr. Eagle relied on, Cooper Way is a rural development, it's under the DMV. If you, where Westmore Myers Road, there's a shopping center, the DMV is in, there's a large apartment complex called Westmore Apartments. And then south of that is Cooper Way. Um, that is a, a dense project, they have five unit townhomes and one four unit. Um, in this case, we tried to separate the buildings to create more light and air within the development and to allow breaking up of the viewscape from outside of the development. For purposes related to what went on, on Twentieth Street, the homes to the north of the development that Joe spoke about at uh, Nineteenth and Main. This is exhibit number fourteen. This has an appearance of being a lot more dense than what we're proposing, because there's a general detention basin in the northwest corner of this development, the homes came first. And then came the townhomes seven to ten years later. In this instance, this entire area is one of the most popular areas to live in, in the county. And Dan had testified as to the limited nature of units available. Uh, it's hard to find a townhome unit available in Lombard. In fact, I don't even think one closed last year. Um, at this point, uh, chairman, members of the ZBA, uh, we believe that the standards have been addressed. I don't think you need a recitation of how all the facts fall within those standards. Obviously, we're here with a different development. And one that we believe provides a strong benefit to the county based upon the workforce housing element. We also believe that we add amenity. Uh, just west, southwest of us, there's a hotel, it was called the Sinesta. And some of you may know it, if you, if you uh, drive up Main, it's near Twenty-second Street. It's a large, somewhat sprawling uh, site. Uh, the Sinesta closed and uh, I think it was Better Price that brought it through the development process in Lombard. They converted that to housing. Uh, that certainly is more dense than what we're dealing with, but it's also reflective of the need in the area. And it is fairly urgent, even with that development, it's difficult to find uh, workforce housing. The quality of this housing is above and beyond Sinesta. The quality of this housing is above and beyond Sinesta. And one of the things that we will do in this pro, in this project, we're not setting aside units in one group for workforce housing. These units will be governed just the same as everybody else is. They'll be interspersed. You won't be able to tell who's workforce housing or not unless you go to the recorder's office and look at the record. With respect to the deviations, uh, we are trying in, in this instance, not to overreach. I've explained the density. That's the most important. Uh, that's the, that's the one that we'll continue to keep a dialogue with Lombard on. Uh, the utilities on this one are sufficient. Fire life safety has been addressed. Uh, DUDOT has wonderful comment on the current design. We have some tweaking to do based upon the prominence of the ride and ride out uh, improvement on the northeast corner, uh, but we are substantially there. Uh, when it comes to the design, some people will say, well, where are kids going to go? Where, where are couples going to sit outside? They have a rooftop amenity that, that you can enjoy. You also have the three parks that Dan mentioned in the area that I've mentioned. And it is accessible to a school site, which are often commonly used for throwing the ball around or what have you. So there are actually four recreation areas right there. If you're over and you want to go over to Montini, you can certainly do that. Uh, so that would be a fifth large, large recreation area. Uh, in cases where there's that type of open space, the amenity or open space within a development, uh, it's, it's important, but you have answers to where people are going to go play and experience the outdoors. Uh, at this point, Mr. Chairman, would it be best to wait until all the neighbors are involved so we can handle all the exhibits at the end and ask them to be admitted?
I don't think they, if they, they want to get to an exhibit, they can ask for, let's just present them. Yes, tell me what you think. You're going to present everything as new, or?
Mr. Chairman, well, since it's getting kind of late, we have nine minutes. We cut them off, but I don't think they'll be very happy about it. Do we agree to extend this hearing to another date to make sure everybody has a chance to speak?
Well, we'll, we don't have to agree to extend it. If we don't finish, it's automatically extended and never.
I just wanted them to be clear of that. And that hits a lot.
Alright, let's, let's get the exhibits. Let's get his presentation done so we have everything in and then we can move to questions and comments. Do you want to just present the exhibits as identified as your, uh, presentation?
I, I would like to, Mr. Chairman. I have a few additional ones from the application. Uh, if that's okay. We have a exhibit seventeen marked as the project narrative that was part of the application. We would ask that that be admitted. That covers only what was said tonight. A workforce housing supplement description, which has in writing a lot of what you had said tonight by three witnesses would be exhibit number eighteen. And there's also a, a table of compliance. This is exhibit number nineteen. I believe that we have been through exhibit number twenty-one, the binder being twenty and the traffic report being exhibit number twenty-one. So I would ask that exhibits one through twenty-one be admitted.
Be admitted.
Thank you.
Alright, now let me give you some guidelines. We're going to open it up for public comment or questions. Here is how it works. You'll be sworn in. When you get up to speak, you're going to give your name, spell your last name and where you are located relative to the property. Those right up, uh, on, against it may be given a little bit longer. It's usually three minutes per person. You don't need to say the same thing as somebody before you. If they get up and say it, you can agree with them. If you get, when you get up, would you also do us a favor so we can home right in? If you're for it, say I'm for it. If you're against it, state, say you're against it and then the reasons why. At this point, how many, let me make something clear too. Those that speak tonight, if we don't finish, then there's another hearing and Mr. Daniel in his closing brings up something that you, you find offensive or you want to comment on, if you've spoken, you will not get another bite of the apple. How many people want to speak tonight? Not as many as I thought. Alright, then, those that want to speak, why don't you stand up, raise your right hand if you're sworn in?
Do you raise your right hands, please? You solemnly swear firmly. Testament about to give this class our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Alright, is everybody, you people keep clapping up. Is everybody that wants to speak stood up? Did they stand up and, and take the oath? Alright, is there any elected official here? Alright, we will start with elected officials. Are there any homeowners groups here?
Yes.
If you're with a homeowner's group and you want to speak as the homeowner's group, then you have to have that approximation that was agreed to by the members or you speak as an individual. Alright, then, um, let's start with the two elected, two or three elected officials. Whoever wants to go first, let's start.
Good evening. I'm going to talk real fast so I get this all in. My name is Truce Anne Karkart, P S N Peter, U R K A R T. I live at fourteen oh three South Addison in Lombard. That is unincorporated Lombard. I understand that Roosevelt, uh, Roosevelt and Myers that this is not going to impact it. And I'm saying, I, I'm Samuel Wong. It was so bad from seven o'clock till nine o'clock in the morning, you can't even get out of there. Then you have the school buses and they stay there. You can walk to the school. Only all the children don't go to, to York Center. Half of the children go to Stevenson, which means they're going to have to be bused. Okay. As far as our green spaces concerned, I found out about this project last night. It was never brought to the park district. It was never brought to the board. Yeah, and as if I re understand it correctly, there's going to be anywhere from two to four bedrooms, which my estimated, estimation is correct, that would be anywhere from six to eight bodies, let's say people in each apartment. That is going to have a huge impact on the park. We, as of right now, have a hard time during the summer with all the requests we have for people renting the parks. So to just assume that it's going to be open space and anybody can come on over, it, it, that's not true. We have softball games and baseball games and, and events that go on all summer long. So I really wish they had come and talked to us about the screen space situation. Because a lot of it is just, I mean, one of our parks are going to be under construction for two years. So that green space is going to be gone for at least two years until the, you know, the improvements are made.
Hey, let me just ask one thing. I, I'm assuming from the way you've spoken, you're a member of the park district?
I am. I am the park board president.
And since you just found out last night, the board didn't meet and discuss it, take a vote?
No.
So you're speaking as an individual?
Yeah. I just, but I am speaking as far as they did not inform us of any of this. So if you're going to use the property, the park district property as green space, don't you think somebody should have told us?
Yes.
You know what? You've been through this how many times? And clamping does not affect us. It, it, it actually goes to kind of annoying us because you're slowing the process down. So let's, let's just point it, we were doing real well there for a while. Okay, and you know what? Who's talking right now? Make it a comment. I want them up. I'm not putting up with this.
Take me out. That's not your problem. Take me out of here. Sorry.
The meeting's not going to go on till you stop.
I mean, I stopped one and a half hours. You've been talking for one and a half hours. Now I stop.
I asked them to be removed.
Something good effect on, you'll start to shut that down and trying to get me out.
Sir, I'm going to leave too because, alright, we just, we, alright, this is my first meeting and you're.
Can I, can I suggest that you just adjourn and set another hearing?
Well, you're done. You're done.
Okay.
Hour and a half, thanks.
Are you going to, sorry, very sorry, I'm going to die in the room and tell everybody what you do. We ready start answer a question and you yell at us?
Right, we have the right to speak, right? With your question, it's, it's our right.
Yeah, Eric, Eric.
And you've been speaking for an hour and forty minutes. We all work too. You want to go home.
And you told us to agree, we're disagreeing.
Yes, we're agreeing. We're all tired.
After by agreeing.
We've been listening to bullshit for an hour and forty minutes about a development that's going to affect everything in our neighborhood.
How about, oh, disagree.
Big.
Or.
Five housing units.
Man, shut your mouth and don't talk. Listen, now.
Five housing units for workforce housing? Now, or shut it up.
Do what you can.
Shut your mouth and let's go. Move to the Melbourne's workhouse. Now, both crowds, no, they don't, no. Dance police. Let's go.
I'll tell you what, the people that are still here want to wait till it calms down and then proceed on fine. Otherwise, we can continue this too. We have four days. What is the pleasure of the audience tonight? To continue or to come back? Okay, then let's continue. Uh, who, hey, Watson? And we'll start and we'll work from the problem at.
My name's Thomas Nobigus.
Oh, alright.
You got me in the fight.
Phil, sir. Go. Go.
We have one for the attorney.
The rest, oh.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I will say first of all, I don't necessarily speak. I'm not a.
Can you state your name, please, Mr. Bond?
Uh, Thomas Nobigus. It's spelled T O M A S. Last one is spelled Nobigus. N O B is in Victor, I C K A S. Um, I, I am not elected to speak for everybody, uh, but have been, uh, speaking with a number of my neighbors and hopefully will be addressing some concerns and hopefully overall can save some time. I apologize. I may go over three minutes just a little bit. Um, I wanted to start out by describing our neighborhood and the existing conditions. Um, our neighborhood, as has been mentioned here, is unique. Uh, the, the Yorkson, uh, co-op, uh, YCC neighborhood, as it's known now, um, one of the unique, uh, traits about our neighborhood is that by design originally, and I have an image of this, uh, there was what was called a shelter belt, uh, created around the entire neighborhood. And what's important about that is that it was a green space, a deliberate, intentional green space. Some of that green space, some of that shelter belt exists on School Street. In fact, uh, the, the long strip of property that is effectively part of this development was originally part of the YCC and was a designated, uh, green space. Um, I, it, that, that green space, although it's not privately owned, it continues to exist today, right? So there is uh, up and down School Street, almost completely, uh, shrubbery and screening. In the nearby area, so there, there, there are a number of on Myers Road, you know, there's been some discussion by the developer and, and Mark, uh, about, uh, the, 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 the development or the difficulty potentially of developing this site. I, 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 I will respectfully disagree. Uh, there have been numerous single family, new construction homes within the last three to five years. Uh, in, in fact, even this year, there's, uh, a, a single family home that's under construction, uh, just down the street on Myers. There's both large homes, uh, in two, three thousand square feet and, uh, smaller ones at two thousand square feet that face onto Myers and fit within the existing character and the existing neighborhood. Uh, so the idea that this lot is not developable as a single family home, uh, to me lacks probability because there are clear examples on down Myers within a quarter mile. Uh, I would also like to talk a little bit. We, the developer, uh, talked about a couple of nearby developments that they felt were analogues to this. And I, I actually picked the two closest, uh, high density developments that were close to this. And I want to talk to us for the aspects of those that are uh, important that this development proposal lacks. Uh, so the, the Berkshire is a great example, uh, in Oakbrook Terrace, right? And I, I'm, I'm not going to go through both of these developments, but they're in there. Um, some of the key features about the Berkshire development are that it has a large, uh, screening wall against, uh, in this case, Myers Road with large mature like shade trees. Um, the, the units themselves face into an inner courtyard, which means that the, uh, traffic, the headlights, the, the garbage pickup, all of that is contained within the development. Um, this, the Berkshire development incident also backs to or is directly adjacent to, um, what is a effectively similar existing neighborhood to our YCC neighborhood. And what they chose to do there was that they had the parts of the units facing the, the residential, right? So you don't have the, um, um, you know, the side or the parking lot facing the residential. You've got front yards. Um, briefly, uh, one of the other key differences between this proposal and uh, both the Fairfield Place Townhomes and the Berkshire Townhome Development, uh, has to do with parking. And what both of those developments have in common that is not in common with this is that they have, like most townhouses, they have a garage space. And in front of the garage space, they have enough room to put a car. So when you have a visitor, they're right there. I'd also point out that the Fairfield Place Townhomes and the Berkshire Townhomes have, uh, private green space that's not on the road, which is actually centered into, uh, private courtyard spaces or is blocked off by a large wall. And that, I'll, I'll get to why that matters in a moment.
Is that a whole lot more?
I, I have some.
Well, you're on, given you, we'll look beyond the three minutes. How much do you have left?
I, I, hopefully this will save our blank save, but if everybody.
If everybody's going to take what you did, so why don't you wrap it up now? Because you, you did go.
What they're trying to say is we're trying not to repeat things. So I'm trying to go through some of the key aspects of this.
Also, we agree, we, our hand does be a greeting. Go faster. Instead of clapping, since that offends you, can we raise our hand quietly? If there are those of you that want to speak, if you come up here, if you just say, agree with what he said. Or if you stand right there and get one, we get to that point, give your name.
We, we can do a short hand, save even more time.
Yeah, but they, the, the part of the record, they have to at least identify them and say it.
Alright, so we have as neighbors, some, some significant concerns with the proposed development and they center around three, three major things. One is traffic, whether it was noise and, and the other is the setbacks and the buffer and how that impacts the existing character of the community. So in terms of traffic, parking, right, we, we, what we're talking about in this development are effectively four bedroom units. When we think about what the market is for a four bedroom unit, it's likely not going to be a single person. It might be a couple, but it's most likely going to be families. And in fact, by definition with workforce housing, we're, we're really trying to feed into families here, right? And so what that means is that you've got a mom with a car, an analyst car and probably we've got a kid that's going to have a car. This development provides, uh, effectively guest parking for half of the units, but all of the units are three or four bedroom units. There is no space in front of the garages in this proposed development to park a third car. Right? Um, you know, when, when, when the developer talks about the School Street parking situation, um, I think that we have, we're not traffic engineers, but we have an ability, a lot of issues with the way traffic flows on School Street, um, with the school buses and parking on there. And I will add that there is a significant level of additional complication because School Street is owned by Lombard. Historically, we've had issues with enforcement of various things because it's county property, the, the right of way is Lombard or not, or maybe it's the township. Nobody really wants to claim it. And then the street is obviously Lombard. So historically, we've had issues with, with frankly, enforcement of, of existing things. Um, in terms of the, the design of the, of the set of, of townhomes as proposed, I, I, I did a little thing with trash pickup here. And what I'm getting at is this, is you've got two effectively alleys out of between Myers and School Street, right? And per the proposal, the, the, there is, the only provision for trash is for individual units. As we know in DuPage County, we have multiple trash collectors, right? So you can pick from whatever you want. What that means is that typically twice a week, you've got a trash company, truck coming around, right? And because of the layout of these, of these townhouses, right, not because of its trash collection, but because of the layout of them, you've got a trash truck, let's say it comes in off of Myers, makes a right turn in, comes back around to the other one, goes on School Street and then backs out. Beep, 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 beep. Because it has to flip around, go to the other direction, right? If, if this was laid out differently, that would not be an issue. Furthermore, all of that noise from that trash pickup, it, it, there's not a centralized trash pickup location. You've got it at each individual unit. And all of that noise is channeled directly to residential areas that are adjacent, right? Headlights and screening. So the developer has said a couple of times that they're screening for the parking spots. And there is on the Myers Road side, but the important side for us is the side that we live on and that's. And there is on the Myers Road side, but the important side for us is the side that we live on, and that's School Street. And when you look at that plan, there is zero screening between the parking spots and the street. There is none. What that effectively amounts to is two issues. One, just a general amount of screening, but two, the headlights, right? So these are guest parking spots. What that means is that obviously people are coming going and a lot of those are night. And there is a significant, uh, I, I don't know what the technical term is, Mark, maybe you can tell me. But the, 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 where the headlight shines, uh, is, is significant and will directly impact, uh, the, the books across the street. Noise, right? So noise exists. Um, in the existing condition right now, because there's this green space buffer along School Street, uh, much of the noise from, for example, Myers Road is, is dampened. Because of the layout of the townhouse units, you, you're creating a channel of hard surfaces. There's nothing to break up those hard surfaces, uh, within that, that driveway alleyway. There's no trees that you would see in the other nearby townhouse developments that would break that up. What that means is that all the noise from Myers is, is being bundled and echoed down to School Street. On top of that, we've got a real big issue in the context of rooftop decks, right? So today, there's a single, single-family home there and, and, you know, presumably around two acres, you would put two houses, right? So on any given summer, you know, uh, afternoon, there might be a, there might be a barbecue. But with thirty units, you've got fifteen X barbecues effectively happening. We can agree during summer that there's going to be fifteen times as many barbecues that occur. Okay, people have barbecues that make noise, we understand that. This is unique, though, in this development in that those barbecues are occurring on the road. That means is that all of the noise from this, and there's zero provision on the design here to accommodate or mitigate the noise, all of that noise is, is traveling further because it's up high. And in the even mature trees, even if they were to plant large trees, wouldn't mitigate that noise, right? Um, the one other thing I would mention about noise, again, uh, when we look at the, the layout, uh, there, 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 because there's no green space between School Street, the parking, and then this big blank wall, you've got obviously a reverb and an echo effect, uh, from that. That wall's not broken up, you know, to break up sound, it's, it's a big blank wall. Um, just a couple of other things, um, there's a sewer listation there. Uh, understanding that the bulk of that, uh, facility is underground and it is necessary for this because of the height of the, of the grade and everything there. Um, but the thing about a sewer listation for thirty units is that if the power goes out, you need to have some way to pump the effluent. Okay, right, we don't want it to stay on site. So what that means is you either need a pump bypass or you need a generator, right? Um, so neither of those are necessarily shown on the plans as they exist today. But if somebody even just hauls in a temporary gas pump or a temporary gas generator, it's going to be sitting against, again, a big blank wall, zero screening to School Street and the residences that exist. I'd also point out that the, the majority of the visitor parking, which we can, I think all agree, is likely to be the noisier type of parking, uh, is pushed up against, uh, the closest portion of the residences up against, uh, School Street. Um, one of the things that I bolded or that I think is really critical to point out, and, and I, in the effort of trying to save time for you here, I'll kind of skip over a lot of information about our neighborhood, but I want to read this.
Well, I'm giving you a little extra time, I saw about six or seven hands, which has bounced about twenty-one minutes, so go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Novikas has previously spoken public hearings and the neighbors do do a fairly good job of adopting his testimony. Just, uh, we, we've had it before.
Now you have to agree with Mr. Dan.
This is, this is, this is what I'd like to read, is that the value of the established neighborhood is harmed by the removal of the shelter belt and the green spaces. This is a critical factor in the character of the area. I think that almost everybody who, who is in this room who lives in our neighborhood would agree that as you drive in, the value of the neighborhood and the value of our homes is, is directly related to the character of the neighborhood and the design. That, that design goes back seventy years and has been intact, like visiting player time. The, the, the landscaping as proposed on the School Street side, effectively, I think it's ten points out of twenty-nine hundred points for DuPage County, it goes ten points over, it's the bare minimum. Um, this is my joke for you today, communication with neighbors is page left intentionally blank. You know, I think, I think that it would have been, um, prudent or, or helpful. And I think that it would have, it would have been neighborly at the, at the very least if we had been able to communicate ahead of the, uh, project. Um, solutions, right? So again, is this, is this an impossible problem? Is this lot impossible to develop? Um, no, it's not, uh, it's not impossible at all. Uh, with the right proposal, this lot can be developed in a way that is not detrimental to the neighbors. This is supported, I believe, by the existing nearby single-family and other developments. Today's proposal lacks the critical characteristics that would prevent adverse impact to neighbors. This property does not represent hardships relative to numerous other nearby successful development projects. Um, the proposed development has a, has a clear detrimental impact on the quality and value of this established neighborhood, both for adjacent neighbors and the broader community. Nearby developments have been designed in a way to mitigate adverse effects. So other nearby developments have been able to. The proposed development does not take advantage of such to address the issues it creates, and there's no rationale to improve this conditional use. Thank you.
All right, at this point, those that agree with him, would you stand? If you state your name for the record and, and say you agree with him, then you're in the record and it's considered testimony.
We have additional speakers.
Let's get through these first. All right, you know what? I, I hate to make you do this, but could you come up to, this way, come up to Michael, just give your name, spell the last name, say you agree with him, and then we'll have it in the record. Those, the ones that were sworn in, you want to come up, the ones that were sworn in? Or anybody?
Anybody, the ones that were sworn in.
All right, who wasn't sworn in if you want to agree, just stand up, we'll swear you in. Well, will this, none of us in the future, we have to forgive in testimony? I, I don't foresee another hearing. So he'll, he'll wrap tonight. I would just admonish by the attorney, did anybody not understand what I said? If you weren't sworn in, stand up, you're sworn in, so that your testimony will count for the record. Who wasn't sworn in, raise your right hand, would you administer the oath, please?
If you solemnly swear affirm to the testimony you want to give at this cause now hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you die.
Okay, however you want to line up, if you're gonna go pretty fast, I apologize making you come up here, but I think it would go faster and smoother.
Will we have additional time for individual speakers?
After these? Yeah, let's see where we're at, come on your left, and then we'll. If you, if you, whoever speaks now, okay, whoever agrees to this now, this is your time. You, you passed up your right, you, you agree whatever they, they said.
My name is Rick Zepeda, live at nineteen West zero thirty-one thirteenth Street, right down the street, right next to all those parks.
Spell your last name, please.
S, S is a Sam, A P Y T A. Uh, I agree with everything Thomas said and appreciate everything he does. And, uh, if they, if we could use their parks as much as they're gonna use our parks, that'd be interesting too. But I just, like, I really appreciate. But I promise it's not, hope this doesn't happen, I'm definitely against it.
And Roth, R O T H, I agree with Thomas, um, uh, one, one hundred percent, thank you.
My name's Al Rego, R A G O. I live on eight oh four East Fourteenth Street in the York Center community. I agree with Thomas and I'm opposed to the current plan for development of that proposition.
Hey, just to clarify, you were against, so when they agree with you, they're against.
Uh, Mark Patrino on Latchdale Circle, I agree with, uh, Thomas. And Mr. Khan, if this is a development that's near and dear to your heart, we hope you take into consideration what's near and dear to our hearts. Thank you.
Rafino, R U F F, I N O, like the wine.
David J. Pace, P A C E, fourteen hundred Church. I agree with everything he said and I'm against this development. Thank you.
Krista Viva Squale, D E P A S Q U A L E, at one South two one five Pine Lane in Lombard in our neighborhood. I also would like to add to, to his about, there's no sidewalks for foot traffic for when we're talking about children going to school in that area. Sidewalks are a very important safety concern if we're adding that many people.
David Stone, Latchdale Circle. Um, I agree with everything that Thomas said, it is well presented and, um, basically against the project, but I think it's salvage, salvageable, although it can be created but differently.
Can you spell your last name, please?
S T O W E, David.
Thank you.
My name is Rose Halper, H A L P E R, and I agree with Thomas and I am against this project.
My name is Sandra Vega, my last name is spelled V E G A. I live at six one five Racton Circle and I'm against this project.
My name is Vince Fracassi, last name spelled F R A C A S S I, and I agree with Tom, I'm totally against this, and that's it.
Dot Tapia, B A T A W I T R. I'm against.
Chris Duval, D U V A L, one South one seventy Pine Lane, thank you, Thomas, I agree.
Well, it's Sabarnet, B A R N E T T, eighteen West seven twenty-five thirteenth Street, around the corner from the proposed project, and I agree with Thomas, I'm against the project.
Hi, my name is Kristen Dominguez, K R I S T I N D O M I N G U E C. We live at thirteen fourteen South School Street, directly across from the planned project, and we are definitely against it, agree a hundred percent with Thomas.
Thomas Otake, O T A K E, one South two eight one Pine Lane, agreeing with Thomas, against the project.
My name is Janet Smith, S T M I T H. I live at eight two eight East Fourth, Fourteenth Street, and with the corner of school and Fourteenth Street. This is going to hugely impact traffic and people walking and things like that. It's, it's ridiculous, ridiculous to put thirty units in less than two acres. I agree with Thomas.
Doris Dornberger, nineteen W zero two zero thirteenth Street. Last name spelled D O R N B E R G E R. We live in a community that is seventy-eight homes in a hundred and two acres. We can only get in and out of our community off of school and Fourteenth Street. I agree with what Thomas said, there are many more issues, and I'm really concerned that we were not, that we know no more and that we're not given any more consideration than that. We're important, and I do believe townhouses could go there. Thirty is ridiculous, I would be strongly supportive of workforce housing. I don't think you're really gonna do that.
Gabriela Weaver, G A B R I E L A, last name W E A B as in Victor, E R. Um, husband and I literally are on the corner of school and thirteenth street, so this is definitely an impact to me and my family, and I agree with Thomas, we don't agree with this project.
Uh, Roy Garcia, G A R C I A, uh, with a one S one four one Pine Lane. I agree with Thomas and oppose, uh, this project.
Carol King, Rochdale Circle, I agree with Thomas and against this project. There is no reason for such density, density in that small area.
Anne Toby Garcia, Anne with an E, Toby, T O B E Y hyphen Garcia, G A R C I A. I live at one S one forty-one Pine Lane, which is half a mile west of this proposed development within the York Center community cooperative, uh, property land. Um, I completely a hundred percent agree with everything Thomas stated. I love the proposal for this property, but the property is wrong, the location is wrong. I would think that the county would want to work with municipalities instead of, um, putting down more pavement on current green spaces. Take the pavement, paved area that we already have that are not being utilized to their capacity, such as High Point Center, which is basically in my backyard.
We have other people that didn't get up here just to say they agreed, and, and so they can talk. You are trying to get the best of both worlds. If you agree with him, you agree with him in that, then I'm gonna have to ask you to move on.
Well, consider High Point Center for your property.
My name is Lana Peterson, P as in Peter, E D as in David, E R S E N. I agree with Thomas and I think the word ridiculous has been used a few times. I think the density of this project compared to the density of the existing neighborhood, I know, I know we're all for progress, but, um, I just feel it's a little bit too extreme. I'm sure there are beautiful buildings, but there's just, there's too many of them for that area, thank you.
Tom Miller, uh, one S two three five Pine Lane. I agree with Thomas, I am against the proposal as it stands now for development, thank you.
I'm Sylvester De Prata, uh, I agree with, D E P E R A L T A. Got it? Thank you. I live with my wife, uh, just adjacent to the lot that they are proposing to build those, uh, townhouses. And, uh, I'm lucky that my grandson just moved in with us, just to watch us two rather. So I agree with Thomas, thank you, Thomas, more power.
Rick Johnson, one two two nine South School Street. Somehow when they were talking about School Street, they talked about the problem itself, the problem, no, which I don't know why that matters. And the daycare, but skip the three houses, the two houses are important. I am agreeing with Thomas.
Randy DeVito, D I V I T O, I agree with Thomas, thank you, Thomas.
Dave Peterson, spell P E D E R S E N, and I'm against the proposal, just like Thomas said.
Hi, I'm Rusty De Prata, D E P E R A L T A. I agree with Thomas that, you know, my son should move in when he turned eighteen. We are next door at thirteen, thirteen twenty Myers Road. I just want to make sure that we're able to stay.
I'm Ilse Messner, um, N E S S N E R, and I'm at one two two nine South St- School Street. I am in one of the nine houses between the north side of this property and Roosevelt Road, nine single-family houses that are up there. Thank you, and I agree with everything Thomas says.
Is that everybody, all right, how many people are left that want to speak? Two? Three? Four, five? I'm trying to figure out, intending we're gonna get an idea how long to stay. All right, if you ain't been sworn in, all right, why don't you, let's queue up and let's go. And we'll stay and finish you the five off.
You know what, I will get smart.
You can just say you would give your name and address and that you agree with Thomas. All right. Don't be intimidated, if you want to talk. If there's five or six, it's eighteen minutes, so it's, I can make a break.
My name is Lado Wassernangovaya, here's a Latin name, W A S S E R N A N hyphen G O U V E I A. Um, I live at, I can't remember my address, eight two eight East thirteenth Street, um, just around the corner from the proposed property. And I agree with Thomas that this is just too dense of a property.
Hello, my name is Linda Samuel Polochek, P O L A C E K, I live at twelve thirteen South Addison Avenue. Uh, I am also on the Board of Commissioners Secretary for the York Center Party Listor. Um, and. And by from agreeing with Thomas. You are wonderful, by the way, Thomas. I love the way you, anyway, sorry. Hartman's Townhomes are nearby in our area. Crime is pretty high in those areas. Putting something like, those townhomes look beautiful, but they are just not meant for that space. It's going to be harmful, I believe, to our Park District as well, and traffic will not be minimal. It's going to make things a lot worse. My children being, having been students at the York Center Park District. Lots of events that go on there. The lot, the street is lined with cars. It gets so crazy busy there for events and things like that, not just the day-to-day traffic, but in the evenings as well. So having that many more homes in the area is just, it's going to be just a big old mess. I don't know how the, how the school's going to be able to function with parents with all that extra there, so. I would like to request that there be a continuousness, because I think that there are a lot more people in the community that would love to come out and speak and hear more about this as well. Because again, there was unfortunately short notice on this, but I know that this town is small, York Center is small, but we are very strong and we rally up troops to fight against it the best we can, because I know that pretty much the entire area is against this. Thank you.
All right, just a quick thing for the record. I'll note that it was published February 7th.
Ken Franklin, just like men Franklin when they can. I'm against this project because of the density. If there was a smaller number of units, then I think it would be appropriate. But the last thing I want to say is that the deeds of many do not get subjugated to the profit of a few.
Hello, Adam Johnson, J O H N S O N. I also live in the community about a block away at 18W 720 13th Street. And we're allowed to ask questions to the developer, lawyer, and as well, okay. I guess my first question is.
You want to ask questions and also state your position, or you just want to ask questions?
My position right now is against it, could be potential with heavy modifications. To clarify, I guess, to the lawyer, whoever wants to respond, clarifying that it's luxury housing, workforce housing, potentially affordable housing for certain subgroup. So I guess the question is, which is it? And what are the price points for each one of those designators?
Is that your only question then, or?
No.
I should throw them all, throw them all out. Yeah, just go about taking, that's right.
Yeah, thank you. You had mentioned, you know, building part of it affordable housing for your daughters and just people in general that might struggle economically. Is the price point in the $500,000 to $800,000 range, is that accurate, or could you clarify?
You have two questions? No, pause each time.
Okay, okay. So with that, is it truly affordable for a workforce person making $80,000 to $120,000 to afford a house that's $500,000 to $800,000? Are the units going to be rentable? And a lighting plan hasn't been addressed in terms of outward-facing lighting to the surrounding community. It was mentioned that it's going to be okay, but no plan was submitted to say it's okay. We'd need some clarity on that. With the density of the housing, thus the density of the lighting, before it would be approved. And then there was some neighborhood talk, I don't know the accuracy of it, about the sewer drainage and how much is being put out by 30 units and whether or not the sewer that you're tapping into can handle that, and if you have specific flow rates and pump rates would be helpful for us to make a decision if we think that's in the county workable. And then I guess to the, to our friends and neighbor, neighbors to the south and Rusty and his family, there were some comments made about it being just woodchips, which is unfair and inaccurate, that it's also just storage, which is unfair and inaccurate when a family, three generations sitting right there, live there. So it'd be accurate for the record to be talking about it in those terms and not the latter. Thank you.
Do we wait to answer, or is that all? Do we have a few more that we're going to speak? I agree. You're the only one left?
Hi, my name's Kyle Shanahan, spelled S H A N A H A N. I live at 1S 320 Third Street, which is about a half mile away. I also agree with Thomas about just too dense of an area right now. Dan actually knows me personally. I just wanted to speak on behalf of what we had talked about, the posting that was published on February 7th. Something that happened differently is Dan is also doing the vacant lots that are budding up to the backside of my building, or my house. They did the right thing. They came to me ahead of time. They said, hey, this is what we're trying to propose. This is what's going on. We're within 300 feet. They came to my mailbox and they came to my house and they let me know before I was able to say yes, I agree with what's getting put there because I understood it at that point. Whereas at this point, even though it's published in the Daily Herald, unless the neighbors actually know about it, we can't do anything about it. So I just wanted to say that. So I agree that right now in its current state, it is too dense. I think there is potential, but at the current layout it is, it's just too much for a too small of an area. Thank you.
All right, everybody's been good. Nobody has anything else they want to say? Okay, then you can answer questions and go right to your closing.
Great, thank you. For the responses to questions. The county has a setup where an Affordable Housing Committee of the County Board, two committees, finance and development, have participated in an affordable housing discussion. Affordable housing includes more than workforce housing. Workforce housing reaches that range of 80 to 125% of the annual, the area median income. The price points for the units, for our purposes, and testifying on the rope, I have to tell you, they haven't been finally determined. There's a lot at stake, a lot of planning and engineering that has to go on, including the sanitary and the water connection, because we are looking under a number of lines that are in School Street before you get to that public works facility, the block building of Lombard, it has at the south end of the school. I would imagine that when you say 500, you know, the units could be in that range. All right, and frankly, that's what you see for workforce housing with the percentages that Ida and others are working with. So on the question of truly affordable, when I came here from Cincinnati and was earning $36,000 a year in the 90s, I could afford a lot more than what's available today. And it was hard to afford then with the appreciation of time, over time, it's become unaffordable. And that was Dan's testimony. Will it be rentable? I think that's a good question. I use rentals or raised rentals. We don't intend to rent. These are properties that are for sale. They are homes that people will buy and sell. We don't intend to rent. But there are discussions that come with DuPage County on the workforce housing side that will lead to a land use restriction agreement, and it may be that the county wishes to have one of five or one of six units set aside as a rental for a period of time. Lighting plan, the regulation for the county. No lighting directed at surrounding residential, so you won't have building lighting casting towards school. You won't have building lighting casting to the north or to the east in a way that would be a nuisance, because you can't cast light, no matter how strong, in the direction of residential zone property. No relief sought there. The foot candles at the lot line, one half of a foot candle is the requirement of the county. Some of you were around for the Usmania hearing with the restaurant. You have between 0 and 5 and 0.5 foot candles near the lot lines that are not in the wetland. I'm not sure if that was something that you were involved in or not, but 0.5 foot candles is the standard for all residential property in DuPage County. Again, no relief. On the sewer floor rates, it's a four-inch line. It's a force main. All of it is underground. And Flag Creek has been around for a while. We're obviously going to be designing to their standards, their floor rates. There's a lot to be addressed during the final permitting, but Flag Creek is in line with us on the four-inch main. We've exchanged a draft easement document relating to the route of the force main, and Flag Creek just said all you want me to do is make it private. No other comment. Certainly the force main will have backup power and protections in case the power goes out. I'm going to take note, I think you mentioned Rusty's family. A lot of you know me. I mean, I went off the neighborhoods beforehand. And I spend time in the neighborhoods for Usmania I did, for the project on Pine Lane I did, and I get cat calls. Someone calls me scummy tonight when they're in line. So I hesitate a little bit. Now on this one, I, we had a realtor walk the neighborhood. Mr. Navicas asked questions one day and the next day he had answers to all of them. I don't believe I have a voicemail from you. I know, but you know that you can always call. We've dealt with each other before. We did work through the neighborhood and we gathered some questions and we responded to them immediately. So it's not as if we became embargoed. Did I miss any questions?
Other sewer, so are you tapping into the west side into the I guess, which part are you tapping into can it hold? Not just what your new construction is, but what the existing load will be on the existing infrastructure.
So yes, we can tap in west of us. We have to work the route out. We also have routes south and then south into the east. There are multiple connection points available where Flag Creek has the capacity. So we should be able to tap in some of the other connection routes may not require the force made. All right, with respect to landscaping, and I'm not sure if it was really a landscape plan, but I'd ask that you focus on 15B. It's not that there's no landscaping on the School Street side. It's that there's so much that we use the second sheet to show you what we're doing. So 15A is the landscaping for the site, Myers North and South, and then we have a hash box. And that hash box leads you to 15B. And that's the landscaping on school. All right, and to the extent that we're dealing with Lombard and driveway access, where you don't have pavement or a bothered light for that driveway, you're going to have something planted. Noise was raised. I want to set aside garbage. I think that's something we all deal with in the neighborhood. I've got just as many people within a block of me that are going to be emptying their trash once a week as you're going to have here. The routes for the garbage hauler are reasonable, and it typically happens on the same day for residential services. And they will occur within our development. To the extent that you have a concern about rooftop noise, the effort of the design of the rooftop, you have the ledge that comes up the regulatory height, more than 36 inches. Sound travels in a cone. All right, everyone's been, everyone turns before, sound travels in a line and along a cone. So you shouldn't have that noise down below. Anything that gets over that wall should be landscaping, and it dissipates over time, and across the street you have mature trees as well. So you should not have a noise problem there. The headlight glare falls into the prior discussion. Now, what we're dealing with is a neighborhood called York Center. I've been before you on Pine. I've been before Lombard on the north, and I've dealt with other projects in the area. York Center is not uniform in its development. It's not. Pine is completely different than Rockdale. Both of those are completely different than 13th Street. And all of them are completely different than the east side of school. There may be homes on school, but the use is not purely residential. It's commercial. I do represent the owner of the property to the south of this site for quite a while. I have direct familiarity with the use to the north of the site. Both of them have been commercial in character. The use of the site we're dealing with now, commercial in character. If you look at the aerials provided, you'll see where the outdoor storage was. You'll see that we've used that strip, not for a green bumper zone, but for driveways and outdoor storage and barely how kind of the trees that serve as the screen for the outdoor storage that occur just 25 feet from school. So it's not the same block, and at the north end, it certainly is not the same block where you've got the other uses and the commercial uses. I submit to you that we've met the standards in this case. I understand that you have a concern with respect to your role in not overstepping. Some may see that the County Board devolves the policy of the county. But I also think the ZVA plays a role in these projects when it comes to independent development. And your recommendations play an important role in setting county policy. And I do think the workforce housing is a strong plus in this case, and that we're not overreaching, given that the density on property that should be zoned R3, given its location and utility connections. Once it's next to Lombard, it's not overreaching to ask for 30 when you're allowed 24 to 25 as a right in Lombard. These are not townhomes that are built in the same fashion as the Abbey that Joe talked about or on Coofin Way. We separated them to create something different, something attractive, something with more natural light passing through. More interior green space. Berkshire was brought up, it's not the same development.
Yeah.
It isn't the same development. It's in a different context, surrounded by land uses that are slightly different. It's also hundreds of homes. So in this case, we have a lot that has two front yards. It's a through lot. That often leads to exceptions. Throughlots usually do. In this case, we are asking for limited relief in the cone. We believe that the density request is, and we attached housing plan within it is an acceptable plan in your development exception under case law and under the zoning ordinance. We will continue to dialogue. On this one, you know, it's unfortunate. Last on Usmania, I was accused of not walking around enough when I spent days in the neighborhood delivering plans, and on this one, even though it wasn't me, we had a realtor walking around, and we're still accused of not walking around. I gave my email out. I'm happy to talk to folks on a reasonable time basis. But I think you can understand somewhat why we didn't do more than we did here. I appreciate the time that you've given to this. If you have questions of us or our team, me or our team, I'm happy to answer them when the time's appropriate. Thank you.
I had Marcus and Jack Priest who wanted to introduce.
Jimmy, did you hear Ron Williams' letter marked as well? I think Mr. Hanif was out of town. Okay.
Can I ask a question about the whole annexing to Lombard? So we're. What, what, I couldn't even understand. Sorry, I just wanted to ask.
Mr. Ketter, can you speak into the microphone? I don't think it's on.
I'll be real quick. I was just asking the question, if they're going to annex into Lombard and we are York Center?
It doesn't matter. They're not annexed, so it's not in front of us.
Okay, I just think it does.
Just one second, do you want me to go out there? My name is Kristen Dominguez. I was sworn in, yes. I live directly across the street from this planned project. And respectfully, I don't agree with anything that's been presented tonight, because we, we deal with the traffic, we deal with the small road, we deal with noise. The idea of having, we're Rusty. The idea of having, when Rusty is on the corner with us, God love Rusty, but when his family goes on his rooftop and he's one family, we hear everything, everything. We can hear it. So the fact that they're saying that there's going to be no noise is ridiculous. Traffic also, we have a lot of issues up there on School Street with the buses. You can do your, you can do your, whatever they're called, your check. Thank you. But we live up there and we know what happens. And the fact that you have decided to put, or they have decided to put a parking lot right in front of our home. And there's someone, it's not going to be lit up. Well, we don't want it lit up, because then our whole front yard gets lit up. But the fact that they're thinking about putting a parking lot right in front of our house with an outlet that goes straight onto Myers Road for cut-through traffic. We have enough with cut-through traffic for people trying to really light. But it is, it is really kind of a congested mess up there already. And you all need to be aware of that, because like I said, they can do their studies, but we live there. We know what we deal with. We have school walkers. We have people walking their dogs. We're anticipating sixty-plus cars coming and going in front of our home, cutting through. It's just, it doesn't make any sense to put that many condos or townhomes on one little spot. And we would like to preserve our neighborhood. I mean, we were drawn there twenty-three years ago.
Be real nice. You're not touching on a bunch of stuff.
I am. I apologize, but I feel very strongly about this. And no one, respectfully, no one came to us and talked to us about what we would like.
That was made real clear when it showed the comments of that, so it's.
So just want you to know. Thank you for hearing me.
All right, we're going to continue this case to April fourth for a recommendation meeting. You can show up if you want. There's no testimony. There's no argument. It's discussion by the board, but it'll be April fourth at five thirty in this room. Okay. Then this meeting's adjourned. Is there, is anybody still on there that feels, wants to make a public amendment or? Then I'll, meeting is closed. There is now, and I'll open it up under the rule for public comment. Is there any public comment from anybody here or online or on the TV, whatever, whatever that's called? Seeing none, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.